What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session. Today we're looking at the a history from Lewis who took first place. On the two thousand pound guarantee turn. Let's get started. Do you like this limb?
Okay.
I'm always raising here.
I think at this stacked up. You get to do a little bit of limping.
About some. You open jam that?
I think it's like makes it attractive either open jam or limp jam.
Yeah.
Yep.
Jam or?
Yep, there you go.
Alright.
And yeah, so yeah, twenty five.
I I think you could go anyway, and even if you just raised it, I wouldn't hate that either.
So we limp, we get this board. Something to say bad, no?
I would bet one big.
Yeah, we have a range advantage when we limp and big blind checks back, so we can bet most boards, you know, at some frequency.
Cause when you check raise here, it just looks really strong. I mean, there's plenty of buffs for sure, but it still looks pretty strong. When you try to get all your your stack in. By the river.
Okay. So Lewis goes for a good check raise?
Hey, alright, alright.
You're saying?
Jam, I mean, yeah, jamming's okay. If we had a diamond in hand, I'd be pretty opposed to jamming. Top trips. Seems like a good hand, it's gonna cooler all tens.
Yeah, well, people show me they like their hand. I'm pretty happy to get it. It's a pretty draw heavy board.
The guy. Right, exactly. If he has like, you know, I don't know, king jack with a diamond, he's like pretty live and he knows that.
Did he fold?
Yep. He folded.
Yeah, yeah, that's like, I don't raise back there, right? Keep that, I try to keep that fish on the line.
I think if you're gonna call the flat three bet, you need to donk turns where draws don't improve. So like on a four of clubs, if you're gonna flat that on four of clubs turn, I kind of think you need a donk.
I'm gonna create a zero out of. Behind so much?
Yeah, exactly. Otherwise, you just, you just give, you know, control of the pot over, and that's kind of the unfortunate part. It's it's not that I'm like worried about draws, quote unquote, but like, I don't want to choose to let him decide whether to put money into the pot.
Hey, he can just realize his equity if he wants to.
Exactly. And then that kind of like, you know, draws can pass out, they can jam on you, a nine is kind of, you know.
How big are you donking? How in this pot, how big are you donking to turn on a?
Quarter, probably quarterish, given that we're so shallow.
Okay, so you wanna call and then dunk turn?
If you're gonna call, I don't know that's better. It's also like Ken said, if he likes his hand, just like.
Yeah, I mean, he's never folding a ten.
No.
But the ten is getting, but ten's getting all the money in no matter what order you play.
Pretty much. I mean, unless it's like, unless it's like the nut worst turn in river, like a ten could check back if it's like whatever, eight of diamonds or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this a good jam?
If he's wide enough, it's a good jam. There's players I would jam this on if I think a lot of like small pairs and weak aces, because we're behind that range.
So this guy lived, I would just call.
Yeah, we'll just check back sometimes or actually rising equity with two to the age.
Yeah.
Yeah, this feels plenty.
If he's at like VP like thirty, thirty-five, I think it's like a little dicey. If he's VP like forty-five, fifty, he just has enough junk that like, I'm happy to run it.
Yeah, we already see the plenty threats of Lewis here.
Oh, you can't look this one up and solve her dude though, like you, you need to assign him a range and like, look at it.
You should, you should be able to see a limp range in HRC. I mean, I'm sorry, not in HRC and GTO wizard.
Oh, for sure, but it's just, it's, I guarantee you.
Playing that limping.
Like, he's not what he's playing, like I'm. The the equilibrium solution is out the window with this.
The problem is, these people limp so many better aces, ace X, like you got the worst ace X here, they're limping ace, three, ace, four, ace five.
Exactly, that's the thing.
Freaking junkie aces that are crushed us.
Yeah, he can limp ace five off and he can call it off.
Well, I mean, if that's the take, then you shouldn't be playing a polar strategy. You should just be playing a uh.
Linear.
A linear top heavy strategy.
Mm hmm.
It would make it like ace nine suited would be infinitely better than ace two suited if that be the case.
Right? Cause then it coolers some of those aces we expect them to be. And it's flipping against the pairs that we also expect to be in this range, like expect pocket fours to be out there. And like ace two suited, not excited to run it against pocket fours.
Nope, there it is.
So you'd need like the offsuit branch would be better here, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't even use those, because this lip strategy is actually well constructed in GTO wizard, so I I don't even think I would want to use the offsuit junkie aces here.
And so we start to see the plenty Lewis at work.
Well, but again, it's like if he's, if he's wide enough, if he's just like got enough, you know, jack nine offsuit crap, then.
Mm hmm. The mighty bush.
I wanted to respond to Ken's comment about the offsuit aces, though I think jamming kind of does make some sense, because they're the ones that are gonna have a harder time playing post, right? Like, we can keep in his random, like, you know, if he's living eight six suited, we want to keep an eight six suited space.
Did we want to bet that? Did we want to bet the turn against that check with it with that strong with the ace ten? The 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 last hand.
The.
But. This one here.
My thing.
He donks. On a board he shouldn't donk on, we call.
You wanna check here? I think that's not.
That's my question. That's my question is when he now checks this turn, we bet half pot.
You should just bet small, but doesn't matter, you need to bet her.
Yeah, I would bet.
Okay.
Cause I gotta have a lot of buffs there when they check.
Yeah.
But Tim, like, I don't think they're gonna fold any ace they limp. That's why I don't want to jam like ace two, ace three, ace four off, because I still think they're calling you with ace five, like ace five off, you know what I mean? Like, I don't think they're fault, let fold that shit.
I feel that, but I feel like if you wanted to pick ones to jam, the offsuit ones do make sense to jam, like they have a tiny bit less hot and cold equity, true, but they have much less playability if you take a post, so it's nice to just like not take it post.
I'm just really purely.
This unless this guy is folding every big blind.
Yes, that's. It's out of, it's out of line, but as next play, I don't hate creating tenders off the equilibrium raise there is what, like, ten five off, ten four off?
The sizing is, the sizing. Or big ones?
Yes.
Yeah. The sizing is quite big. Yeah, I mean, typically like in a.
Three point three.
Okay. Is this a PKO? I don't remember.
No, no.
Okay.
So I fold to the raise pre flop. Ah, it's all in, never mind. Yeah. Big raise, I ain't calling that. I didn't realize it was all in. I'd still fold probably.
It's close, like, I, I mean, you're paying two point five to win like. What, how much?
I'm assuming there's some ICM here.
Thirty percent.
You're gonna show up with thirty percent here most of the time.
So, okay, slap it off, Louis.
What a stupid way to lose it, though.
Like, I don't want to put in fifteen percent of my stack, there's ICM there.
Sure, sure. Uh.
I see continue.
You know, it it's, it's, it's okay, like this texture I would be a little. Apprehensive to continue with, like, I feel like.
There's two good bar for the big blind here.
Uh, he's gonna, he's gonna just put it in your face with like a random six.
Yeah.
An eight, he's got a bunch of two pairs.
Yeah, I'd be more inclined to check if I had a diamond in my, like the queen of diamond in my hand, I want to make sure I see a turn, but this hand, I don't mind betting.
Okay.
Uh, the two, the sizing that was like. Uh, almost forty percent?
Yeah, I would have gone smaller too, Scotty, I don't know. I don't think it's a.
No.
A huge deal.
Is this not a swap or you want to polarize actually?
Well, you would want to polarize, um, I just don't think this is a hand that you'd slot into that, right? I mean, I guess you could.
Yeah, I don't know how much we have to polarize with eleven effective there, SPR is two, bustin' two.
Okay, open, good. You get a call, that one, okay. I might even check back here, like, just because he's only got four behind, he's just gonna.
I love the that one.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's okay. It's just the guy's so shallow is the only reason I would have deviated.
Okay, then four, check, bet four, okay.
Um.
Yeah, I guess we should.
Well, there's an under the gun limp. Does that, how does that change the calculus for you?
Well, he has nine big blinks. And I have ace jack. So if you want.
But what does that mean?
Which is. But he has nine big blinds and his range is strictly aces, then.
Man, he could just be limping fifty-six percent of the time, like that's what you gotta look at that, right? Like, which is hard, like.
But isn't that just is like that makes it so that we never fully jam?
All right, so if he, let's say he went all in and then two people went all in behind him with nine big blinds, could you use that same justification? You have ace jack, he's got nine big blinds, you're never folding?
I think so.
No.
So if he jams in the button, re jams, you still like ace jack?
No, yes, it's like math, because if it sticks to ten big blinds, I think the value of this hand is good enough to play for ten or nine.
Oh, this has to be ICM, right? By the way, where do we start at? Like, everyone's so sure, we gotta be in the money, right?
Bills torched.
We just started again.
Yeah, but how we just start? No one has chips.
What's, what tournament is this? So I can maybe help sort that out. This is a turbo?
Put the blinds in real, get them out of.
I got no idea, man, I got no idea.
Change the big blinds to chip.
Okay, we're just starting, okay, we don't need, maybe, it's not necessary information.
Well, I was just thinking if he was to maybe, let's say, late reg.
The blind's already pretty high.
He definitely late red, because he started with. Fifteen big blinds or twenty.
Mm hmm.
Anyhow, I would blink here. You guys are playing? I would.
It depends on how much that guy lives under the gun.
LP, I don't, I don't hate it. Yeah, exactly. If he's limping a lot, then button knows that, but I am lighter.
Completely disregard this, this guy.
I mean, I guess though, you completely disregard, it's coming from a guy who's running twelve four, how do you feel now?
I I I put this into the bucket of like, it's not necessary. Like, I don't think it's bad, but do you really? All right, so you're playing a bunch of five dollar people who don't care. You spend all week studying this game. Do you really want to take a spot gambling four ways with ace jack?
I'm yeah. Daddy's studying poker. Daddy studies how to play cards to make them off money.
I mean, that's kind of how I look at it.
You wanna lean?
Oh, wow, my hair off. My mic's on, cool, alright.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
It's okay, daddy, you can study and make money with cards.
Yes.
Okay, there's another thing here, which is like, if this is definitely gonna go three ways, um, you know, a uh, an offsuit ace high is like good, it obviously has. You know, fairly good equity, but it's not the most. We, we do really value suited hands when we go three ways. Cause it when, you know, when we show up against, you know, queens or ace queen, we would like a lot produced.
Yeah, seven deuce.
Alright, well, knowing this, I'm happier about.
I would have any five against these two, I mean, this guy wakes up, what can we do, right? But. The rest, I think it's fine.
Well, I say you gotta look at the HUD, obviously, or seven two deck guys, a donkey.
Yeah, I think it.
And gone.
Be pretty clear if we could look at his stats, I would think.
I don't think there's a good reason to bet one here. Like, when you bet one, you're trying to induce. You're betting one on pair boards. Betting one allows you to bet more often. This is a queen eye board, not really have anything, this is just plenty here, Lewis.
I think it's, I think it's just like excessive complication, like, do you also have like a quarter pot or a third pot sizing here and also have a one big blind sizing?
Yeah.
Starting to get a little dangerous.
Is this a, just a simple range bet?
Like, in ICM, I'd be happy to just make it twenty-five percent.
Queen high dry like this is pretty range betting, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, so we just bet small, don't understand the reasoning behind one on this texture. There you go, you induce, now you face the aggression and you don't have anything to back it up, so you have to.
Well, yeah, that, this feels kind of bad.
Kind of, we kind of do have something about it, like ace high with backdoor is kind of good.
Not against the check, but not against the, not against the check raises, is it?
And this is check raising appropriately, I would say, so if he's not, then you're just torched.
But but then also look at the stack.
Yeah, exactly. If if this is the balanced check raising range, this is um, this is our bluff catcher.
Well, it's good, because you have a card over second pair, you have backdoor flush, you have ace high, like, there's a lot to continue with here. But if he's not finding like obscure check raises here, and it's just like queen X all the time, you're torched.
Yeah.
Even if he finds all the good check raise, are you not too shallow to continue with ace eight?
Well, I, uh, I think you're probably supposed to continue with ace eight there.
I don't think it's right at this time.
I feel like we're betting most of our worst aces here anyhow, like our ace two, ace four, ace five, ace seven, ace eight's gonna probably start chucking.
Oh.
Then.
We're gonna have to enter it. Queen three, six rainbow. With the three of clubs, not that that matters, but it does.
You said what? Queen?
Three, six with the three of clubs.
Mm hmm.
And we have ace eight of clubs.
So they check, you give them a baby bet. Uh, not thirty-three percent. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, twenty. Yep.
It's the smallest bet we can.
So you got seven, five in there, you got six, four in there, you got four deuce in there, you got five, four, six.
That's a check.
Seven, four.
The ace eight's junk, that's what I thought, the worst, the worst aces there, you can make the straight with the seven still, and the eight's gonna.
So ace eight backdoor flush is a pretty clear continue there. First, first that check raise range, which I don't think is reality for this spot.
Right, sure.
We bet, can we bet twenty percent instead of thirty-three percent there? Louis, because we bet one.
Still continue, guys.
Yeah, let's do that. And so we bet twenty percent, and then he made it four times our bet. It's a little smaller.
Just a second, man. So we do continue.
I mean, we've studied spots like this, like at least in the solver, I understand making an exploit fold here, but I'm not surprised, it's a solver continue. How often do we check the flop?
And now he raises.
It is, because we never check.
He raises. Bigger than that. He raises to four, which is. Relative to the pot.
It's like half pot.
Just give him fifty-five and let's see, you still gonna continue, I would assume.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, now you're mixing.
All the backdoors.
You're mixing.
Oh, it's only the ace eight. It, oh, yeah, it's that top card thing. Where the. Where the top card is better.
So if it matters.
Pads are best.
So like, raise size matters here, so if raise size matters, and if it doesn't send enough love. Hmm.
Now I would have folded.
Size matters.
Peter.
Time to call it off.
Well. I could do. Never knew.
Except on this hand.
Puts it inverse jacks. Call, I like call. Not that it really matters, it doesn't really matter.
Folded my twos there.
I I probably would have folded it too, Ken.
We, I like those in the action.
Do we not want to, hold on, hold on.
I'm not gonna open the hand, so I'm not calling it, I'm not gonna open that hand.
There are a bunch of.
I'm with you, Scotty, I know what you're trying to say.
Talking to Nick two, talking about not opening. What do you want to see, Scotty?
I want to jam, I want to, I want to rejam this, I don't want to call his jam.
Yeah.
The ace king?
No, not on the, yeah, on the ace, on the ace king, not on the aces, I love the flat of the aces.
Oh, he can, he can.
Oh, okay, it's not big enough, okay. There we go.
Yeah.
Alright, that's what happens.
There was some confusion.
There's the aces.
I'm limping here, is this wrong?
Uh, I think limping here is good, especially when you're covered.
The suited open.
Limping is good, yeah, you um, you limp stuff in the king nine suited range, you raise some trashier stuff like queen do suited. And you raise some like offsuit stuff.
It can't be wrong, though.
Cause it feels so right.
Yeah, I mean, you just can't be wrong to raise a king nine suit in there, but the size again, the four seems, well, that's the standard, so we've had that conversation already.
So when we raise from this small blind, as we saw, we love rainbow board. But we like him ace high. I don't know about ten eye.
Ten's good for both our ranges, he's got more of the. We got more of the junky stuff, because we're polarized when we open, he's calling to open, so I think it's probably a better board for us all around.
This is probably a good check raise at some frequency.
Okay, we bet that up.
What king nine suited wants to check?
Diamonds, you you have to not have a backdoor flush to bet it.
Uh, it's interesting. Like, oh, like every combo bets more, every single combo we had here bets more than this combo, it's like an outlier, right?
Yeah.
Welcome to check back on.
King eight, yeah, king eight and king nine, for some reason, just don't want to too much.
Seven, eight, nine. Right under the ten, seven, eight, nine. Anything above that ten, that's playing. A bet call. More of a check. The ten pairs, check, check, check.
Ten pairs is really bad, because now he's not folding.
Yeah, he could just block six eye here, we're toast.
They just have to fold.
The nine is bad here, right? Very bad.
I would have borrowed the turn small, honestly, if I'm, if I wouldn't, I mean, we bet the flop, I would have borrowed turn small, again, he's on, I'm gonna cap my range and then give up river.
Okay.
Might be bad, but. Cause I know I'm gonna get bluff when I check.
Do we have big bets on this one?
Feel like I'm giving the hand up when I check.
Hmm.
At this tag that. Lock top equity, feels like we don't really bet big on these, right?
How many ace kings does everyone have, though?
They don't have any.
We have all of them.
Uh, I don't know, man, like, three big blinds probably doesn't seem crazy here. Like, there's a lot of nine X, jack nine. There's like. Ten kings, stuff like that.
Okay, big bet called, terrible turn, check.
Oh, what a terrible.
Yeah.
Even worse.
It's worse.
No, it's not worse. That seven is a great turn.
Yeah, eight, eight's already dead.
Got it.
Oh, yeah.
Just call. Just call.
I'll fold.
Yeah.
I might nip fold here, I'm not gonna lie.
What? You can't fold?
Wait, you just want to pay the man?
Yes, pay the man for his half pot bet.
Hey, that they're bluffing them five hour games for after stack.
Beat some of their value range.
Ken, I'll tell you that.
Tell the baby that you've beat some of their value range, so you have to call a half pot bet.
This is a eight if they had a kick, they would have went all in. This is what this is.
Yeah, yeah, I I honestly, I'm agreeing with Ken here. This guy's gonna show you an eight.
Lock. But he's gonna show you an eight.
Oh.
Okay, he found a bluff, good, good call.
Yeah. Yeah.
But is he, is he gonna show you a, is he gonna show you an eight more than seventy-five percent of the time?
I think so.
Alright, then. Good.
I don't know. It feels close, I don't know.
Call. Oh, wait, it's a raise and a re-raise, I didn't see.
Yeah.
Okay, that's different.
Yeah, but it's a small blind, oh, wait. We opened a small blind, just called.
Yeah. If we're gonna play.
Yeah, I'm rejamming, I don't care, his range is just a lot of like spuck in of stuff and some pairs. Mostly worse pairs.
This is not good, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't love flattening and laying the small blind in, like, I want ace jack suited out.
Yeah, we have to, we have to jam or fold.
Okay, if we're here, I'm just ripping.
Yeah, oh, at least betting something, you can.
Thank you, I think. The only size here is rip. With pocket eights?
Rip.
Yeah. We're in trouble. Okay, um.
We're not in trouble.
That worked out well.
We were.
Yeah.
Yeah, he he'll get, he'll hit the eight or the board pairs, we're out.
I know.
Oh. Jamming is not good here, am I wrong?
It's a three that I can hand.
Yeah, it's fine.
I think Jimmy here's probably, probably okay.
Thirty-five effective here.
I'm ripping this whole day.
Again, I think it's good, but.
I think it's pretty standard.
But with this guy, you're really willing to.
He's in a big blind, that guy, what are you worried about?
Yeah, you you show it, you showed this in like forty big blind charts sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, like, this is standard behavior up to forty, I think.
And yeah, like, I definitely count the razors stacked up more than the big blind stacked up.
Yeah.
Cause the big blind just, you know, has a hand pretty rarely here.
Okay, uh, might be a bit plenty, no? You guys all turbo jam here?
Yep.
I don't always jam these spots.
King ten too.
I think the suited Broadway re jams are like. Part of what the field is not doing and part of where edge is coming from in today's game.
What about? What about raising there something like fifteen? That's, that's, that's all in against the twenty, but isn't. But but isn't pot committing? If the four comes over the top.
Why do you want to play fancy poker, Scotty?
I'm asking, I'm asking about.
Yeah, but why are all these fancy ideas going to your mind?
I mean.
One fancy idea, just one.
Using a non-all-in sizing is not crazy when there's like, uh, ICM, it would prefer that over jam later in time.
I studied, I studied my seven X three bet range.
Right, this is why, Louis, because using a non-all-in sizing here is not crazy, um. Oh, I I forgot the rest of what Pete said.
I looked at the chibi V charts, um, it mixes all in at fifty big blinds. Small blind versus hijack.
And it was great.
Yeah, it's a, it's the primary strategy at forty, thirty-five, thirty, twenty-five.
Uh.
I'm not good enough to do.
Jack. Why do we pick ace four offsuit against hijack?
Seems reasonable. Really? And you choose, you choose trashy. Offsuit, ace X and king X as your main three bet bluffs here. Um, solver, to be fair, re jams ace four off and three bet bluffs like a little bit of ace five, ace six, ace seven. But like, I don't.
Versus hijack or cause that first, is that versus cutoff and button?
Uh, that's versus hijack.
Okay.
Yeah, so like, he's mixing it up slightly here, but I don't think it really changes much.
In high ICM spots, do you guys use the? The with limps chart, do you guys open limp like GTO wizard has you doing?
I do a lot of limping in higher ICM spots.
Okay.
I don't, Scotty.
I turned that off.
Oh, yeah, jam.
Yeah, I mean, you're allowed to jam, I don't know, it seems crazy, but it's in the chart. You obviously just get a lot of folds.
So, like, if we have, if we're under like fifty percent of the field, I'd bet you these jams come out with these uh, little aces here, we're down to like twenty-five percent.
Yeah, probably become more like three bets, right?
Three bets or maybe calls, yeah, I think we're, we're three bets than jams for sure, tie variance, you're getting close to the body.
Yeah, some of them are still in there. It's not.
You're looking at twenty, you're looking at twenty-five percent?
I'm looking at fifty percent effective or fifty percent left, thirty effective, now I'm at twenty-five percent left. It's still in there, twenty-five percent left, it's still jamming. Cause this is given symmetrical stacks, I guess, because. The other side also is under a lot of ICM pressure and can't call us. Okay, but no, but not at thirty, it changed me to twenty effective. At twenty-five, it's jamming, but not at thirty, just too much.
Here, you're not, you're not really supposed to limp, I think limping here is a mistake. You allow villain to see the flop for free. So I think you should.
And I always go back to like, if they're not gonna be polarized, but they're raising over a limp, I don't want a limp. And five hour games, that's mostly what you're gonna run into. People just happy to complete with all their junk.
Also, if you're winning, I chill down with a side.
Hey, I don't hate it, it's a value bet.
You don't limp jamming that one.
He wanted to limp jam, the guy checked behind.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's more like the absolute one that does that.
Right, the suited ones are okay to play a pot. They don't need to look jam, happy to just raise call off.
Raise, I'm calling here.
Call sometime.
Yeah, you're, you're allowed to call since you did, you can raise it too.
Like, I'm not raising here. You're like in the middle, you're not supposed to raise very much.
This guy ain't got nothing or he bet.
I don't hate it. Um, you're supposed to raise some of your like best one pair hands here, and this is just about there. You probably have a little, you know?
Guy in the middle, I don't think has much of a raising.
For sure, yeah, you wanna, you wanna like price out, uh, big blind for, for gut shots and like weak spades and stuff like that. Weak three X like has five outs against you, like seven three of clubs or something stupid like that.
You're confident we have a raising range here.
Barely.
Well, this guy doesn't have a one big blind C bet, kind of, it's just all week, it's weird as soon as you see bets this.
I see this a lot in, in, uh.
Yeah, it happens plenty, it's just weird.
It doesn't matter, it's like you see that.
It's also like a check.
Not, not sure if we raise a lot. Him likes it. I'm like, I'm not sure.
It's like betting out of position, it's always gonna mix.
AC dog, is this a good one? Is this something I'm missing, but I'm not moving that?
Uh, feels a smidge wide to me.
I'm folding.
Hijack versus cut off at thirty-five.
Phil's exploited if he's using the small size too, so he's widening his three bet range song with, with the smaller size.
Yeah, it's all of life.
Good.
Louis, I looked at the heads up solve for a similar one to that ace three deuce board and, uh, it is hardly raising, uh. Ace ten at all, although slivers are in there, ace queen is what it raises because it is the best one pair hand. It needs, it needs to be that good.
Okay, so multi ways probably a little bit less.
I don't know, I think there's competing factors. You're, on the one hand, you still respect the original razor. On the other hand, you are interested in denying from big blind.
We need to do more, more of that multi way stuff. I think that's what it sums it up.
I like this call.
Yeah, but. Do you check here when you make top pair on the board like this? A club is gonna come. An over card is gonna come. What good turn do you have here?
I am checking Jack two, yes.
Is this a, uh?
Calling Jack two is my question.
It's a blind versus blind spot? I don't think you're checking too much, uh, top pair.
That's what I'm saying. Um, I'm not checking much and I'm not calling at all here. You have, there, SPR is low, you're supposed to raise him. I don't know.
My worst check, are you sure it's like our worst?
I like it.
You have to convince me of this.
I mean, the fact that it has diamonds makes it kind of the most interesting one to check.
Yep.
It can, it can turn nice cards like this card, whereas like Jack deuce of hearts can never do that.
I want to see it in the machine.
I have no idea what to do on that river.
I would just don't jam that river every time. Oh, check.
Machine me, baby.
Jack nine of clubs. Five of nine. Are we checking a lot with Jack deuce suited? Not so much.
A, a chunk though.
A little bit.
It's just a little bit deeper than you have here, right? Isn't it fourteen?
Is it? There comes twelve. I thought it was ten. Let's look at twelve. Uh, thirteen?
Exactly, yeah.
Look at.
But you can see, um, the solver is already thinking about checking Jack deuce of diamonds specifically.
The deeper you are, the more you check.
The more polar your betting becomes.
And Jack deuce of diamonds checks the most.
See, I, well, I was thinking that one. Or that's, no, yeah. It's too high card with a flirt out, right? So you need to polarize. I'm surprised at ten. At ten, it's betting small.
I just don't think you really care at ten. Maybe, I don't know, it's kind of weird.
So bet big. That's like, but.
You bet small with this combo. Or check.
Uh. Why? Yeah, okay.
Mostly check.
So say we check, he bets small, do you not raise or that?
I don't.
Not a diamonds. Look at the person, look at the perfect. Solver play. By Louis. By Lewis.
LP the god.
LP the god.
Lewis.
More checking.
Uh, the betting might be diamonds and clubs there.
Alright, poke it.
Okay.
I ain't poking nothing.
We should do that thing here with.
Poke our range. Louis, poke our, poke our range on the turn before you. Where we're checking, just poke on the diamond to see, because the, the jack does, does do some betting. Let's see if it's specifically diamond.
You're on big blind strategy, go back to small blind strategy.
Can you slide up so we can see the bottom?
You don't see the bottom here?
Not all the way.
I do, I see the bottom.
You just pulled it up.
There. Small blind, please.
Yes, mobile charging on turn.
Jack deuce, please.
A little bit.
Yeah, you can check it, bet it, that's fine. And this is where I don't know what to do.
Well, you have trips, you gotta bet big.
The poor lie, uh, yeah. Do we lead? I mean, I don't know, I would check again.
Yeah, that's what I'm not sure.
What's the magic box there?
This guy's double.
That's interesting.
Value betting at five, twice small, like, I don't, he don't know what the hell he's doing.
Nah. Definitely not.
He should be, he should be. He could check the flop, but if he bets the flop, he should always check the turn, right?
I agree.
I would assume.
And if he checks the flop. And we check behind and we, when we check twice, he can bet the, he can probe the turn, right?
Yeah, maybe a little bit. Fourth pair is a little thin, but it's fine, sure.
Right, so one bet, not two. Great.
Okay, taking the river is the best play. I'm surprised it's not like, uh. Poking, I would at least block that here.
We're all, we're range checking.
It does a little bit of betting, but it never bets big. But that's really small. Those hands make me feel stupid.
Low jack, eight, seven, oh, he likes to get after it, huh?
Yeah, it's out of range, ace nine oh there, right?
I mean. Yeah, I would think. As low as I.
Even hijack is only.
He had a lot of outs.
Yeah, this one's, uh, are we under like high ICM here? Because that kind of makes sense the way we'd be. Making these like wide is high opens.
I don't think so, but.
No, that's just his style.
Okay, just like a little, a lot of line?
Uh, very fun, the answer. Okay, so raise?
Yeah, I would see bet this.
Yeah, you're allowed to see pet, no, we're, we're UTG.
Yeah, I would see that, okay.
Check raising's okay.
Yeah, it's good.
Jamming that turn, I don't know.
That's fine.
So we're trying to get called by like a jack, especially a jack with back apart. Or pocket aces.
Oopsie.
Easy, easy, we got the ace of hearts.
With the ace of hearts and the ace of spades. It's just, there was no way.
Oopsie. Whoops.
Well, the big flat, you know?
Well done, sir.
Okay, we saw the mistake here with H Jack suited earlier. It's nice to see a raise with ace queen suited. We shouldn't be fighting that too much.
And we call.
Big one.
Uh.
Oh. We need to read that this guy's a super net if we want to fold here. This is a big exploit.
I would fold.
Bro, it's ace queen suited, I don't think I'm folding, I'm calling that.
So Kyle, if they're already over called aces once, like I ain't trying to run into Kings this time or whatever, there's a lot closing the action. There's two people still behind us.
It's ace queen suited, Ken.
I don't care.
The thing is, is small blind should know these things and small blind should get after it with some like. Some like ace, yeah.
Does he have?
Worth Broadway cards.
Folding here, I don't know.
Let's look at multi way and see if he has a not all in three bet. I, I feel like his squeezes are all in here. He's got all ends in flats. I don't think he has three bets in a spot like this. He wants that dead money. He don't want to get called here. You think he's got a raised fold range?
I, I just don't, he just may not be jamming. He just may be like race calling. I don't know if he's raised folding too much here for that size.
That's what I'm thinking, like, I don't, I, I, I just don't know what, like, I, I'm trying to think what's the worst hand he does this with, right? Like.
It should be like hands like. Should be hands like King ten, maybe King Jack suited, stuff like that should be in here.
They don't jam.
Well, they should be jamming a lot. I mean, if you're gonna be doing this. I don't know, what's he got? Ace, King off, ace queen off, something like that? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know what this is, that's why I'm out. Like, I, I feel like most of, I feel like whatever it is, the majority of it's ahead of me.
I have an easier question about this hand.
Hmm.
Is the two big blind open too small? Given our stack size and the big blind stack size?
Well, yeah, it's, it's probably okay.
Okay.
I'm always calling here.
We've already folded. Don't we have a squeeze rate? We look at the range?
It's also like, we don't need fifty percent equity, like, we need thirty. And, and they're not always trapping behind us with better. Sometimes they're coming in behind us with worse, like. They can't have like king queen suited. In those positions.
I would almost say, uh, they usually have worse.
Right? Like they can't have H Jack, ace ten suited. Like, I think those hands are very much in those players' ranges, so.
You're, you would have to work extremely hard not to find thirty percent with a hand like this.
Right, exactly. Like, if he shows us Kings, then like, we pretty much are good, like.
Do you, do you discount at all the fact that? Against jacks, some of your, that the people behind you have folded one of your aces that, that they, they called?
No, because, because like it cuts both ways. They can also have folded Kings when we're up against Kings, you know, like they can have folded. They can have folded a jack when we're up against pocket jacks and then we're.
Hold on, hey. Can we see the small blinds range first? Okay, so this is where, he doesn't have a, uh, these are all raises or, all, these are all in, so he doesn't have a nine. Or a ten. This is what is alarming to me and why I just want to fold.
He has point one percent nines.
Tases.
Uh. Like, he'll get paid by me better if he just jams. I'll be in there, but when they do this crap, I'm like, eh, nah, I'm out, so yeah.
I don't know, but like you get people who even, um. You know, they'll still jam on the flop with Kings when you flop your aces. And then it's like a pretty easy call off. No matter how you bet it.
Click on the raise nine, click on the raise nine on the right.
I did?
Just, no, I mean, no, on, on, on the actual orange box. Okay, now we get to see it.
Yeah, but that's not his range.
No, I know. It's, I just wanted to see what it was.
Yeah, it's aces and Kings. And maybe ace king.
I would have found out.
If you would have.
But like, we're putting eight into a pot that's like gonna be like twenty-five something.
Dude, I, I would have found out too, and I wouldn't have liked the answer. This is a great fold. It's, it's like you're never good, it, it sucks.
I disagree.
Dude, when they make a ten there, it's ace, king.
Dude, I'm out, I'm out of here, I'm out of here squeezing with like King Jack suited, so. I know not a lot of people are, but.
Yay. Yeah, but you'll go all in, right?
Yeah, you jam that, you don't make a ten.
That would be a nice. Okay, probably.
Uh.
Yeah, King six, that was a good three bet here. Lot big.
See, Lewis, it's a bit disappointing because you're out there finding three bets that are not three bets, and when you have one three bet, it's pretty strong here. You miss it.
You don't take it.
That's pretty weak, Lewis.
I missed that one.
How often do you lead?
At Jeopardy.
Twenty percent?
Yeah, I think you're allowed.
I think you're wrong on that one, Louis.
This board.
I mean, it's some, but two tone will bring it down. Eight, eight high is less than seven high.
Right.
So the button has, uh, eight offsuit eights, right? So with the last first, we'll lead on this last first to the button, then we would definitely versus other than the gun, we'll have more leads.
Yeah, I, I, I like that.
Yeah, it kind of goes like that, right? So this is a good check raise, yeah.
Check raise with the diamond and.
That, that's strong, right? That's good.
Yeah, good sizing.
My only question is, is it too good to check raise? That's my only question there.
If you got jammed on, would you, would you fold it?
I would call ace six ten, but I think we can check raise King six.
Uh, I'm looking in the magic box. It doesn't really check raise with six X there. I think they're a little bit too good. I think it's especially polarized.
Okay.
You get, you get more check raising. Oh, nope, sorry, I ran the wrong board. It check raises with it a lot. I, I take that back.
And then if.
I was just wondering if you want to use more like gutters, like.
What does it do to? What does it do if you get three bet after your check raise?
Oh, I mean, I'm sure you're just running with it because.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it, it calls and jams some, it's not folding.
Okay, no folds.
That's.
That mixes, this is good mix. It's gonna be a low frequency three bet. Maybe like twenty percent.
I think this is.
Do you, alright, do you like doing this more or less with the shorty and the big blind there?
I don't care about this, you read too much, I just fold that if you do, you jams. But the buttons opened appropriately.
Whoa, 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 you can't, he has eleven, Ken.
Oh, oh, yeah, then I'm, then I'm folding. I'm out, I'm just folding.
Yeah, like you don't want a three bet with him there, right?
Yeah, I don't even want to call.
It would certainly make me play less, but I don't know if, how much it actually matters. In terms of three betting.
Well, if you put this to six and he jams for eleven.
You call.
You gotta call, right?
You have to call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're calling off eleven. You're fine. He has like twelve nines and stuff. He can't be type suited, like he can't.
Bush.
Like a hijack, yeah.
Fold.
Oh.
Fold. Trivial fold.
Percent.
I think it's a fold.
And it's close, I think, I'm okay with folding it.
And then.
Bad against ace, king and ace.
We're fine, except ace, king and ace queen and, you know, aces, kings and queens, everything else.
I fold King Jack off. I ain't folding that, sorry.
This is the bottom, dude. I don't even open King Jack here usually.
This isn't great, Ken.
No, I don't call King Jack, I call King Jack.
It's like when you're calling here, you're zero EV or you're losing, right?
Oh, wait, we're not big blind? I thought we were big.
No.
But we opened, raised it.
We min raise under the gun.
Oh.
Zero EV or you're.
The thing is, we're just getting a very good price. I actually think it's kind of low, but I'm fine with holding.
Is there risk premium yet? Where are we in this thing?
This gotta be solid.
Lewis, you have to learn your small blind ranges. You can't go out there and do that and pretend you're studying poker, because.
What did he do?
I don't, I don't mind this.
Fuck is this?
It's out of range.
Terrible. This is just terrible. This is a pure fold. Get this shit in the gutter. This is terrible.
Please, Lewis.
You know, you gotta know your customer, though.
It was.
I mean. But the guy covers him too, like, even if he's tight.
This is the thing that we should all be realizing about these like aggressive players. Like their small blind ranges raises are bullshit. And like play accordingly. Three bet bluff the shit out of these people.
So Lewis here, I know that if you looked at the charts. It's gonna say that ace four is a wonderful jam. But don't trust the charts here. When you open early in and you face a three bet, you can fold this.
Hijack, lowjack.
Yeah.
If the guy's got a three bet of like eleven or more, I think it's okay.
Wait, we ripped it?
Yeah.
That's spicy. That's good.
If he, if he's under eleven here, it's dicey. It's, you gotta be cautious.
I would call here.
You wouldn't rejam?
I know.
How many traps do you think Kara has?
I'm rejamming.
It is vanilla. Okay, okay. I kind of like call fold, I think.
Yeah, I'm calling.
What, you think someone's gonna backjam if you call?
Dude, he's got a completely uncapped range. All you're doing is disrespecting the very top of his opening range. That's all you're really doing.
Who, who has an uncapped range?
No, the top of his flats. Yeah, I'm sorry, the top of his flats. Yeah, there's no reason to jam.
Yeah.
What's he gonna do? Overcall with nines?
At a five hour, sometimes. Or overcall with some nonsense.
I actually think that's the exact type of hand that's kind of interested in taking it down.
Hey, I'll take two eggs, please.
Uh, wait, we're flattening ace nine O on the button?
Uh, it's probably mixed and there's some frequency. I don't know.
Um, is it?
I I three bet it more.
It seems kind of bad.
Button cutoff, this is a thing, but I don't know if it's a thing in ICM at sixteen. Yeah, 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 yeah. That's a, uh, that's a good, good consideration there, Danny.
I'm gonna fold.
It could be a thing. We we should look.
It is. I'm on the chip P P chart. It's in there. Lewis is a child.
No, 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 no. I mean. Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't, I don't hate it, but like, we we've just conditioned ourselves as a group to play this hand aggressively.
I'm folding here.
It's cutoff button. You have.
It's because.
It's a good hand.
It's a little bit like, it depends how you're pushing the spot, because if you're shallow against the opener. You're playing like a strategy where your all in range is kind of like middle of range. And then you have a polarized flooding range, like aces, kings, and then trashy stuff. And this fits in the trashy stuff. If you're doing a non-all-in-three-bet strategy, this starts to fit well in there. It's like your forty big blind range. You three bet this more than you call it. Right?
Yeah, I think that's well said, Tim. That's well said, I think.
And then you're flattening like your ace queen O.
Part of his opens, right? If it comes nine high and he's opening like king nine, queen nine, that's great. He's opening ace five suited, ace eight, ace seven. Yeah, I think it, I think it just gets, uh, hands with strong equity and better than you to fold sometimes. Like ace ten off is having to fold versus three bed, um. Ace jack off is like the floor of the call. It's not very happy. You got like suited broadways. Well, they're supposed to be calling. Like the offsuit ones.
Right. Louis, no folds of ace nine.
No.
In chip E V.
What are you supposed to do, Scotty?
Can we look at like?
Call and you're supposed to jam.
That's fifteen effective, right?
That's why I don't want to jam it.
Ace say no bueno.
Oh, old ace eight.
Yeah, ace say no bueno.
It's a nature C hand because of the different stack sizes.
Okay, okay.
I'm gonna look at thirty seven percent ICM. Oh, why is it not cooperating?
We're gonna have more three bets generally, right, at, um, ICM?
Hey, I want those with them.
Yeah, it looks, in ICM, it looks like it is pure three bet or fold mixing fifty fifty. Three bets to five chips.
In no toast?
No cards. So I would assume by this point, we're probably ICM thirty seven, probably. So.
I'd say fifty.
Small mistake there, maybe.
I'd say fifty percent field based on the number of hands. We are at number forty five.
Show the chips. Louis, the best I can do is thirty five, okay?
One forty five.
Oh, we don't know what.
I think bacon, some bacon with it?
No, just eggs. Eggs and chicken. Show the chips, Louis, if you can.
Louis, do you smell toast?
Ah, it's like cheese.
Because if you do.
No butter, nobody.
Coconut oil. All right, even at fifty percent, it's mainly a three bet.
So LP, first of all, forty five hands, we're only doing B pips. Where are the chips? Danny asked like five times. That's.
I gave up, Ken.
We were five hundred thousand.
I don't know what starting stack is anyway.
What's the, what's the big blind? Where are the blinds here? We were five hundred thousand in firsthand. Well, you could just go back to pre-flop and see what they put in.
He started with ten K.
Is that the hand?
Look, look at hand one.
We started at five hundred. Just go back to pre-flop. We started at five hundred a thousand, the first hand we looked at. Just go pre-flop.
We're in the money here.
Okay, so Ken, if you say it started at one thousand five hundred or whatever you're saying. How do you explain this here?
Because you're only B pipping. The first hand you looked at, we looked at chips, remember? It was five hundred and a thousand. I remember that. Now we're at six thousand, twelve thousand.
Regardless of where it started, we're certainly in the money here. It's fine that we let it go.
Starting stack.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And now we have forty, forty stacks. So, all right. All right, so we're deeper than I thought, um. I don't know, that, the ace nine is probably still.
Yeah, easy fold ace nine.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. It's kind of out of line there.
I think Carl, but Lewis is a bit reckless. He's gonna play like it's a bounty and the guy has a big bounty. He's gonna repop.
Yes, I I think call just has to be way better, cuz Kara can just have kings here. Not kings. He he can have aces, though.
I guess, but I I still think this is the kind of hand that's kind of like. Mid to high in range, but interested in, um, you know, in pushing other hands out of the pot, like. I don't want anyone to get any ideas of jack, king jack suited or something. That they're good. Like, I want them out.
I don't know. You're playing with brain dead people. These people aren't brain dead enough to do that usually.
Do you pull? Like, do they have pocket nines and like kind of want like, I think they could have pocket nines. I want pocket nines gone.
Can we see Lewis's C bet percentage? Can you look at the HUD? I feel like he hasn't missed a C bet.
Oh, it's gonna be close to a hundred for sure.
Yeah.
That's.
I don't know.
Why is it not there? There's no stats.
Because there's something about, uh. It sees this thing as a cash game and my heart is for M T Ts.
HM three standard, which HM three standard or default?
You don't have a single cash game HUD?
Okay, why do you guys want to see?
I don't care. I'm just trying to problem solve.
Have a bunch of hands to go to.
Yeah, yeah, let's keep going.
Trust us, Lewis's C bet is really high.
As it should be in position.
In position, out of position, upside down, in the back cave.
He finally checked one.
This is a spot where I would like to bet one.
Heads up, multi-way, blind versus blind.
Yeah. Louis must have accidentally timed out here.
Oh, what? I like to double check. I like to double check to this. And then just like. He clicked it. He check clicked it on the turn. Uh, what is this? You might want to go bigger than a click. Either call or actually raise. What is this?
The fish, he's trying to fish the guy.
Yeah, I mean, if the guy's like. He has a jack, if he has like spades, if he has, uh, king, queen, like, he's gonna, if you make it six, six and a half, he's still gonna call. Probably should, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is a super locked up equity board. It's gonna be hard for your blocks to go big here, so.
Oh, no, I like that, that, anything bigger than that, that ace queen folded.
No, not, definitely not. Two overs and a nut gutter. Like, you make it eight, so he's not gonna fold. Yeah, it's jack ten board.
You're right.
Hmm, do we like to turn check, though? I guess it's fine. Checker that medium, probably.
Onking deuce four four. This is more of a checker.
Could be a thing.
Isn't it?
No, this is, you know, like, the two is disconnected. You you need your range equity to have straights in there to be able to donk.
Right, that's what I'm saying is, but we can check raise this.
No pair, we we don't pair boards sometimes.
Not so sure about this one. Like, the deuce, the deuce doesn't hit our range strong enough.
Oh, oh, betting the, oh, jamming the three.
I see, uh, point four percent of a donking strategy here. Pete, so, uh. No, yeah, uh, I think it's like queen four four and stuff gets done.
It's a little bit awkward, Pete, but, uh, yeah.
What are you doing, Lewis?
Yeah, yeah, queen four four is the one that always comes to mind for me. That has a fifteen percent donk strategy. To be honest, like, you're looking at equilibrium strategy, like, just because the solver doesn't say it donks, the fact that you see some activation there. Um, it probably makes it actually really good, just because they're not continuing at, um.
What about bed bed jamming with a three here?
How about? No, no, man, it was just a prank, bro, like, just a prank. Wait.
It's just a prank, huh?
What is this? If we hit an offsuit three, I I wouldn't hate it as like a value jam even.
A value jam, ninety.
Yeah, 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 get called by a side. But but on the three of spades, I don't like it. I was just, I think, it was just a prank, man. The donk was a prank. I didn't mean to, I didn't mean for it to get that serious.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of this, Lewis. I don't know what you're doing here. I don't think. Like, you're going after nothing here, Lewis. You know that, right?
What did he bet on the turn?
At this point, Lewis, you get all the chip, right?
Wait, this is.
This is a bunch of cookies to go after nothing here.
I I disagree with the framing. I think like, winning small pots when neither player has much is where a lot of the money comes from. Like, we're not just always gonna get big coolers in and get them to call off with like second best hands.
Why not just check raise, though?
I think check raising is good. I I think we don't usually donk in this situation. This is like a.
Like, he's gonna auto C bet this. Usually we donk when we're like. You know, you're you're not always gonna get a check raising, cuz they'll check back a ton. But here he's just gonna auto C bet. You can always get the check raises in. You just make him, you win extra money, cuz he C bets.
And this is also, this is also like a failure of like.
And you get more leverage.
Barreling the turn is great. We still have a gutter. We, the six is sometimes still good. Um, we picked up hearts, but then on the river, the wrong straight completes, we don't have it. We have a weak one pair hand. Spades completes, we don't have spades. Kind of a weird hand to bluff jam.
He's probably thinking he needs to bluff the missed backdoor since, uh. Since the front door completed. I don't know if that's the correct heuristic, though. Can you show the turn size, Louis?
Five.
Yeah, bigish.
Yeah, that looks good, actually.
Gio.
Yeah, wants to go like half. And then three of spades river. Whoops.
So I guess the idea is just that we have no showdown and we still need buffs and.
Yeah, we just pure check six three on the river.
That's kind of what I thought.
We are bluffing like seven, five of hearts, uh.
No.
On this river? Then we, if he's not folding a pair.
No.
We don't have, we have.
Like I said, he's calling some a side.
Yeah, that's the thing. I think like a lot of our bluff targets were like on the turn or kind of like in the ace, king, ace, queen region. And I think in practice, you. Did get them to fold on the turn. Um, I don't think it's trivial for people to just like station off with those hands.
That when we could have before.
Calls down.
And then now that we improve over them, I'm not sure that they always, like, I think they check back a lot and we win. Um, like, there's a decent proportion of his range that we just win against.
Yeah.
Obviously, we lose a lot too. I'm not saying we're just always good here, but.
Do we get anything better to fold on the river?
Not really.
No.
That's the question. Does he fold?
In theory, in theory, we don't. He's calling with like ace deuce. He's calling ace eight hearts some of the time, ace seven of hearts.
Ace eight of hearts. Ace eight of hearts is pretty bloody, but okay.
Right, but he's calling.
Uh, he's, he's calling pocket fives full.
That's the question. Is he calling, is he calling pocket fives here? If he is, this is a terrible jam.
Pocket tens is folding. How about that?
I was gonna say, cuz fives does block the straight, which is a reasonable hand for us to have.
Okay, pocket sevens.
Right.
So we don't really donk on the flop, right?
Kings is folding. Fold your kings, but call ace eight of hearts. How about that?
No.
So, oh, dunking on the flop, dunking the turn is, how how was it?
Once you start donking flop, uh, donking turn with six, three of hearts, it actually wants to check and. And realize the equity. Yeah, 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 but like six, three of diamonds is betting the turn.
Okay, so betting the flop is questionable. Betting the turn, is it more questionable?
Nothing betting the turn is pretty good.
I assume we're check jamming the turn.
Says no.
It it says no with this combo.
And then betting, jamming the river feels like a disaster to me. As the streak, I I like the leads.
I I agree with all of that.
I don't understand the the river, yeah.
To be honest, I can get behind the flop in the turn. Like, I wouldn't beat him too much up. Like, it's gonna be competitive, I think. Like, it may not be like the absolute best, but I don't think it's torching. I think jamming this river is just torching. Yeah, that's what Louis said.
Yeah, I think you get, you fold out.
If this guy's just heroes.
With pocket sixes or pocket sevens or something, this is a pretty bad spot.
Yeah, okay, so we agree. This is, this hand has been butchered. Well, none of it was necessary, Lewis. You could have just done, you could have just check raise. Check raise, bet the turn and then, you know, play the river as you wanted and it would have been fun.
And eat some eggs.
So if we do check, he bets small. It actually, it's just calling six, three of hearts.
And Lewis, you need more eggs.
The spades.
And you need to cut down on lagzania.
Lagzania.
Lagzania. Check raising every deuce, check raising every four, six, three of hearts wants to call the flop. Yeah, all that lagzania is not necessary.
Yeah, it's too much lagzania for you, Lewis.
What? Wait. Stepping forty percent with bottom hair, pair no retro when we're deep.
It's the the solver size. Haven't you heard, Tim? Forty percent is the new thirty percent.
Uh, just like, but we haven't been using this. I don't know, we haven't been using the sizing elsewhere. It feels like a weird, we have, okay.
Yeah, we've been doing, yeah, that's forty is just thirty three.
Do you wanna check here?
No.
Then what is it you want to do?
All right, let's move on.
Bet big?
No, bet smaller if anything.
This is a bet big board. This is, this is a bet big board and we can bet range in that, in that situation.
I agree.
Seven is in our range.
It's mixed. I pulled up the solution. It has sizings, forty percent of our range in the solver goes twenty percent pot. And some of it goes like very big.
Yeah.
It's very big overbet or it's very big seventy five percent?
Both.
Okay.
You either range bet small or you have a polar strategy or you choose to split, pretty much.
Yeah, kind of both in this case in the solver.
Yeah.
Oh, you're flying by this hand.
Then open, it's a limp jam.
Oh.
Oh.
Okay, there we go.
And then we scam.
We have the nuts.
There. Limp jam, call scam. Yep.
What do you think of the jam with king ten, by the way?
Standard.
You say what?
Okay. I think it could go either way. Like, are you always jamming king ten there?
How about the guy not raising a seven?
It pla, I mean, that's pretty.
Oh, yeah, eight, eight big blinds, and he doesn't jam his.
King ten plays well in a, in a check back pot. All right, king jacks checking back.
No matter how you put it, this hand should be all in brief love. He should jam, we should call. Am I wrong?
Yeah, he should jam, we should call. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But once he checks, I mean, once he limps, we can check back some of our high cards sometimes.
Mm-hmm.
It looks like the solver is more interested in.
You get no better kings to fold, right?
Exactly. Like, you wanna, you wanna have him have king six, and then, like, you check back and it comes to king high or something.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Queen three, we raise. Okay, Lewis, you just don't know what you're doing in this small blind.
I think he's correctly identified that people just overhold that spot a lot, so he's over.
I don't know. He, I've been in calls with him before where he mixed up the blind strategies there, so he might just have it backwards. Which is kind of a bad mistake. Like, you can't be raising all this shit out of position, a small blind with, with junk.
We don't know what you're up to, Lewis, but it's easy to fix the work.
Please fold.
Yes, very easy.
It's a forward.
He's folded.
One, okay, we limp.
It's six suited. If there's ICM, we could just, like, put this guy in the box, right?
Yeah, push.
If, if there's ICM. I know on a chippy via, this is not, doesn't move, but.
Why not go three streets here? We have top pair blending against blind. We got a barrel here.
I agree, clubs missed.
Yeah.
There's just not much on this board. He just doesn't have the straight really ever.
Yeah, you need to value bet ten here, Lewis.
Low, low half pot.
I mean, the deeper you get, the more you kind of wanna be a little more defensive, right?
Yeah, but you're not very deep here.
We're kind of deep.
It's a big spot to hold the jacks. That's nice.
We have no club. We see that.
Yeah, but it's the small sizing, which I think is.
Is this the big blind? Yes, it is. Okay, it's a big blind, so we, yeah, need to range that, right?
Is this fu, this is for, this is final table, right?
They did.
I think we usually continue barreling on the ace. I don't know about.
What did he have?
He had queen Jeko.
Okay. FT.
It could be the FT.
We were four-handed. It has to be.
Okay. We could three bet small, we could.
I think this is good. It's three better fold spot, probably.
Okay, it's not a call.
Yeah, but maybe I make it a little deeper, cause we're deep here.
How about this? It's number one in chips versus number two in chips. Why don't we just fold?
I agree. I agree.
I mean, if the guy's opening every hand, then, okay, fine, you can mix this in, right?
I mean, you're pretty, you're pretty deep effective with him. Like, you're, you're allowed to three bet him with this, this kind of stuff. Like, the risk of ruin is not very high. If he four bets, you just kind of let it go. It's just a prank, bro.
Yeah, but now we're here.
Yeah, so play defensive. Like, you don't have to, I mean, I'm not trying to play a hundred and twenty big blind pot here, or whatever the hell it is.
It's a nice spot to check back. We just have deeps of equity. I like aces often good if we, if we bink an ace against, like, ace king, which is a very reasonable holding for him.
Imagine betting half pot and he goes all in.
Dude, it's the quickest fold, it's the quickest fold I've ever made in my entire life.
Oh, no, this is awful, dude. No, 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 no. He jams, you cry. Imagine, dude, imagine he jams. Like, what the?
And then we're left, left with a medium stack. Yeah.
Just this queen, queen here, and, and like, oh.
So I don't hate betting. I don't hate double barreling this at some frequency, but like, I'm not gonna polarize that much, I don't think.
What about?
That folding here is, is like the worst.
Feels, feels, feels like cancer, right? Feels horrible.
I might even just tilt call. If he jammed here, I would tilt call it off and pray.
When I see these hands, I'm thinking Lewis doesn't like money.
Our, our barrel here should be something like, like ace five of diamonds, which can get better aces to fold, can get some, like, pocket eights to fold, stuff like that.
That would make more sense, Tim. That would definitely.
Yeah, that ace five suited makes a reasonable bluff, and of course, will have value as well, but this hand does not fit well into a polarized range.
Yeah, he's five, right, with the backdoor, so much.
Yeah, he's, uh, Louis, Louis is opening the box here, putting on his clown makeup and, uh, about to lock himself up.
About to jump.
Has no giveups in him, man. He needs to learn.
Walking the plank and he's about to jump, man.
You're gonna get hurt.
And I, you're, you're gonna get hurt at a final table. Game, you don't realize that, like, it is massive run good to run into a fold here. Which, like, you will sometimes. You certainly have plenty of folds in range.
What about on the flop there, Paul? What about our call on the flop when he bets into two players?
What do you mean?
The three better, pre-flop?
We bet.
We bet.
Oh, I thought. Oh, okay.
I didn't notice we got cold.
I didn't notice either. Is that, is he really there? Is that a bug?
It, it, I think it's a bug. I think it's, it's.
No, no, no.
He's really there.
He's really there. What the hell?
Yes.
And then it goes check. Okay, goes check, check to us, so we, we just, we're just betting.
Would you guys not check behind here? Would you guys not check behind?
Dude, I'm never c-betting when there's an overcaller. Never c-betting.
I'm not insane, then, all right.
Cause he just says, like, jacks every time.
Dude, I've got, I've got alarm bells going off. Like, this guy's range in the big blind, overcalling, like, two Goliaths here. Like, with his little middling stack, he should have one of the highest risk premiums at the table, playing versus. And he decided, he said, hey, I'm gonna flick in five chips. Let's see a flop.
Yeah, he's got king, queen, pocket jacks. Like, loose and bad and, and whatever, like. He'll still have plenty of top pairs there. You can just check back and scam on an ace or a three.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to manage the pot at this point. It's already kind of a mess. Like, um.
We were bluffing three, and we got called, and now we have a pair. We chill.
Yeah, and also the kinds of, the kinds of hands I wanna, like, bluff when it's into three people are hands with very, very robust multi-way equity. Something like king jack is not terrible, cause if it gets called in two spots, it's just doing fine.
Um, yeah, Tim, I like that. I think that's.
Yeah, it's more like mergey, right? It's, yeah.
So, Spewy Master, what does Spewy Master actually have here? He has, he has a ten, he has pocket nines, is that?
Pocket nines, a ten, yep.
He calls ones.
He could have, he could have, like, a good suited spade or clubs. He could have, like, ace jack, ace jack of spades, ace jack of clubs.
But the guy's named himself Spewy Master. It's like my first thought. So, um.
Usually means he's a super nit.
It, it, it could be, it could go either way, right? Like, he's either a super nit, or he's got five, six here some of the time, you know?
I assume that those are reverse tells usually.
Like, you gotta be careful with assumptions.
That's a spicy hand. And king eight O in the hijack?
Oh, Lewis.
Oh, now, now he's, but now you can, he's opening his range up as the chip leader.
Yeah. All right, all right, fine. All right, fine.
What are you gonna do now, Lewis?
What the fuck? Dude, I'm folding.
I'm folding. Final table.
Fold.
You know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna fold and start spamming popcorn emojis. That's what I'm gonna do.
What is going on at this final table? Hear me out.
You're the master of popcorn gifts.
Yeah, the popcorn gifts, that's right.
Do you guys wanna put Rebel Boy to the test, King Do So?
It depends if, how active he's been. I mean, we can. It can never be bad, right?
Just like, big blinds. I think it's just a little bit too big. I wanna go like five point five.
You like six?
That's a good one, Lewis.
And a half?
Don't we use our high-low suited here?
Huh?
Isn't it high-low suited, or is it these all suits?
Offsuit.
Oh, we're in a big blind, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Still feels kind of wide.
Yeah.
It, it's not in range. You'll see king five O more, king six O, but like, who cares? It's okay.
Who knows? In this spot, like, you might be able to go crazy, right?
Yeah.
You could jam a lot in small blind here against some medium stack and big blind. He's just can't call. Like, let's look at a final table, a pre-flop solution here. I think we're all like way too.
Put enough pressure. Uh, three X personally.
Possible, but.
I would rather.
I definitely like raising. Um, I would lean three X here, I think, but I, I, jamming's definitely gonna be okay.
I'm looking at a similar solution right now.
Yeah, let's see.
Um.
If three, if, while you're looking that up, if three, six, oh, the, um, if the, the short stack is even shorter. I like the jam, I like the jam better. And if this guy's fifteen rather than twenty, I like the jam better.
Right, so this is the closest one I could find, looking quickly. He has twenty-five. I could go up to this one where he has twenty-three. Do we wanna see that instead? A little better, right?
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, I mean, it is true. We deep up a ton, we raise a ton, we jam a ton, so. Um, yeah, jamming is the same maybe. Um, you jam mostly like worse suited stuff and worse offsuit stuff. This is good enough.
Can I just say, my guy's been out here open raising nine, four offs, BVB, and now we have an insane pressure spot, and we have queen ten. And he decides to limp. What is this?
That's exactly. I mean, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, he only has bluffs in his small blind, and we're like final table, like, twenty big blinds just has to be looking over her shoulder and waiting for pay jumps, so.
Yeah. All right, so raise everything here.
I, I, and I, I think, like, they just can't call, so. Yeah.
Even if he's spewy out of line, too loose, whatever, like, you raise three, he snaps, snap calls, like, you have queen ten. You're gonna flop well. It's fine.
Yeah, so I wanna, like, set up to triple this hand. The diamond is really important. He doesn't have a lot of aces. We're gonna block straights.
Up showdown.
Now what?
The motion is over.
Should be enough, right?
I know, but just looking at that.
Still has every four X, he still has king high, he still has worse diamonds. Check call here.
We just take it easy.
Yeah, we, we slow down. We slow down. I was excited to triple barrel this. Okay.
Now slowing down. Now we don't slow down.
Check trap? No, pot.
Nah, you can go like six or something here. You could even go like over pot, maybe.
He's too much, uh, too much risk premium, I think. Pot's enough.
Probably. Probably fine.
Was this, was this?
I don't think you'll ever get called by a jack when you bet this size.
That's what you're targeting.
Cause he just doesn't really have, he doesn't really have tens, and like, the solver knows how to hero in these pots, but people don't really.
I would go five at best.
Yeah, and maybe.
Are bad at realizing their captain calling appropriately.
Exactly, yeah. I think, like, eighty percent pot might be the way to go to get called a lot.
Yeah, I don't think you get called very much if you pass, you'll pass, that's all.
Yep. I had a spot like that I put in the group. Yeah, jamming king seven O there seems.
I like it.
Oh.
This is probably good.
I think this is too, too out of line.
No, three, six, oh, now has eight big blinds. This is great.
It's gonna be making money, but I think min raise makes more money.
Um.
Ace three off.
Cause when you run into it, it's pretty annoying. You have no equity.
Been a little bit loose here, no?
No, that's fine. Don't you think? Ace blocker with.
Against second and chips?
Um.
Definitely.
Oh, maybe in his big blind, we don't want to, yeah.
Definitely.
I would tighten up versus the big, versus the big stack, but like, if I'm opening in the middle stacks, I think it's probably pretty good.
Okay, Rebel Boy will put us to the test.
Yeah, and.
Don't have the equity.
Right?
We don't have the, we don't have the equity to call.
Yeah, I think so as well. Which is folk. A chuck. Oh. Lunch at nine.
What do you think, what do you think about this call? Standard or close?
No, I think it's, you gotta play. You have to play. You can't fold.
He's jamming into the shorty, right? So it's like.
Pocket seven, I think. Pocket seven, it's a whole other deal. You still call, I think, pocket seven. Pocket six.
You should try to look it up. I don't, I don't, I think this is a call, but I definitely don't know where to draw the line. Like, sixes and sevens are kind of, um, feel dicey to me.
We'll have to run this one, though.
You can maybe find a similar arrangement in, uh, in the whiz. I don't know.
Hijack on eleven.
You just need a shorty jamming over a big stack with action behind.
It's not much great arrangements. There's one here. This one's okay, actually.
One daddy, three mommies, and two babies.
One daddy, three mommies.
Three mommy.
Yeah, yeah, I found a good one, if you wanna let me share.
I love how the final table's always just a big happy family.
So, yeah. So he has twelve instead of eleven, but the arrangement's pretty good. The big blind isn't as short, but we got the twenty stacks here, and we got us with the chips. Um, so let's see, he's jamming. Interesting that it doesn't have him jamming pairs. I think a lot of people will just jam, like, sixes.
Yeah, it kind of feels like that for me also. I kind of feel the same way. Some people are gonna see pocket sixes and just say, I'm all in.
East ten, maybe. Hmm. Yeah, so we could run this in, in the math machine if we wanted, but sevens looks to be the bottom, Louis. Probably eights is the bottom. Let go of sevens.
Okay, makes sense.
Against, against the weird strategy here.
Which is not his strategy. We don't believe this is a strategy at all, which means that the strategy that we've looked up is wrong.
Burning like point oh seven chips. Sevens and eights are pretty narrow.
Yeah, be curious to construct, like, what we think he actually has, and then take a look at it. Anyways.
But he has king, king, which is not in that range.
Correct.
Everyone is all in.
Everyone is all in. Wow.
This is great for us. Look at.
Six four suited, that is really wide.
Okay, now if you wanna do it with nine, four, I don't hate it.
He has no risk premium.
Four is a lot. Yeah, he is the shorty.
Lewis is just, like, always on the gas pedal.
But you still wanna do it, son. I think four is too much.
Yeah, under ICM, you can go a little smaller, and a short stack, you can go a little smaller. It's like three point five. It's nice.
Yeah. Fine.
He didn't, oh, he didn't c-bet.
Good. Yeah, true.
He c-bet the ace ten.
Wait, it was the trips king board, right, or no?
There's your, there's your exception.
Here's, I kind of think.
God, with no club.
No club, but you can still just bet, like, one point five here.
But where we cover him, I think we wanna be looking for chances to put on some light pressure. It doesn't mean we have to lose our stack, but we can put him to the test a little bit.
Little stab.
Yeah, little quarter pot.
But we, he does not, we no longer have a hundred percent c-bet.
Right, but the trips, or not trips, but the, like, the high pair boards are the ones that are relatively good for us, right?
So Lewis.
Perking.
And the kings especially, aces are more even. Kings are very good for the, uh.
Yeah, kings are good for us.
It's quite terrible. Quite, quite.
Miss click?
Why would you call here?
Maybe not a miss click? Maybe a miss click? I'm gonna chalk this up to a miss click.
I don't know. It feels pretty bad.
If you wanna, like, put ICM pressure on the post, I would prefer to just use this as a three bet bluff and make it four point five. You get a lot of folds. You don't lose.
I like that, Tim. Yeah.
What?
What?
Dude, he's the spew master.
He's gotta have, we're, we're just, he has to have a jack?
Yeah.
Donk's turn.
We don't have compare. Our, our nine is, our nine is terrible, but.
Queen ten?
Not kind of good. I mean, having the nine is like a boat blocker, which is nice.
We're king, our nine, and we walk a lot of pool houses and flushes.
Queen ten of hearts.
More worried about, more worried about not having the, the queen or the ten here.
I, this is just a fold pre, or like I said, you know, you could make an out of line three bet. I, this is just a fold pre, or like I said, you know, you could make an out of line three bet. I think being on the defensive side of the game tree leads us into paths like this, and that's us.
If this wasn't a misclick pre-flop, I have no clue what's happening. I, I really wanna believe that this was a misclick.
Yeah, I think he was just punting.
The rest of the hand though, it's pretty, pretty weird. Weird spot river.
Yeah, I guess the fold, but it sucks.
So annoying. It's just not a bluff, right? Okay. We're gonna get trapped soon if we're making it four every time.
It's almost too good to raise there, right? Like.
No, I think the lower kicker does it quite often.
Well, that's the thing, I wanna go like even lower.
Well, no, I mean like, king, queen, jack, ten will check a lot and then like, as soon as you start getting like nine and below, it will raise. And the lower you get, the more like around six, king six, king five does it the most, I think?
Yeah, it varies, I guess, depending on the chart. Um, but yeah, they're, they're.
Can't you jam too with like king five?
At twenty big blinds, solver's only doing it king deuce.
Okay, maybe it changes a little at F T.
Yep.
Okay, so open short stack, three bet, call from the big stack.
This guy with his overcalls is killing me, man.
So having seen him do this twice, we think he's just like, not aware and has like bad hands.
Yeah, I think he, I mean, having seen it twice now, I think he's just continuing very wide, so. I would be a little less cautious continuing versus him, I guess.
But it's still like, we are.
I would not check.
We're under so much I C M pressure.
We have no diamond, no spade. Wait, wait, we, we bet flop, yeah?
We bet flop.
We three bet and the guy cold called, right?
Then we bet about a third of the pot.
Yeah, I would never check here.
And now his prime jack, I mean, his prime king that we beat, beats us.
So ahead of this guy who's really wide, so.
He still has so many pocket pairs. Ace high like. Yeah, yeah, the nines, yeah. Like, I don't know if he's gonna call turn.
Should we not bet turn?
That's what I'm saying, I would never check turn.
Jack is a really good card for your three betting range.
Okay, so maybe that turn would be good here?
I don't think I would check river either.
I think it, it's a two street. We get flop turn, it's good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you bet river, it's too greedy, cause he could easily show you a jack every now and then, and then.
And diamonds.
You bet this.
Yeah, diamonds come in, jacks come in.
If we had, say we had bet like thirteen, fourteen, fifteen on the turn, we get this river, we have to check fold.
I think it stalls his action every time he has a king, every time he has uh, so.
That was easy. That was good for us.
Goodbye. Alright, heads up, heads up, Lewis should thrive.
Well, we slow down, slow down for heads up.
So, yeah, he should thrive.
The one format that would suit him for sure. Alright.
Yeah, cause you gotta make.
You need to defend here.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, I don't understand heads up.
No, no heart, no nothing, we just fold.
Yeah.
Checks, we check back with ace on?
What did, did we three X pre?
I would bet here, cause your eight interacts with, well with the six and the ten, so you can keep barreling on a nine and a seven, a heart.
What is this?
I don't understand how we're checking back that board.
Alright, I take back everything I said about Lewis and heads up.
It's dry, it's hard to defend, so like I, I feel like it's just a really good barrel.
Now we have to fold.
This is the perfect c bet candidate, yeah. You get value from king high, turn a heart.
Do we really have to, do we really have to call an eight four offsuit?
I think it's probably, it's probably.
I looked up eight four offsuit and it's uh, it only called like.
It only what?
Calls like twenty percent of the time.
Oh, good, good.
So you can let that one go. And also on this ace eight suited, you can check it back. Solver checks it back almost all the time.
Seems crazy.
I've gotten heads up twice in the past week, in the past two weeks, and I don't know what I'm doing.
We're really deep.
Nope, no one does.
Yeah, and deep.
Doesn't get a better race to fold? Right, then it starts getting, doesn't get better about value from a worse ace.
What is he doing, Lewis? Oh my goodness.
You get value from king high though, Pete. King high, queen high. Like queen jack will never fold.
Are you gonna dust it, Lewis? Dust the chips?
The only one getting dusted is his opponent.
You gotta put it in here, right? Three bets, c bet, check, ace thumbs, not three bet pot, you block it. You have king high, or is it the white flag type of spot?
Um, I'm okay showing down king high heads up, to be honest. There's enough incomplete equity that um.
Those are thirty-six bigs in the mid.
You might just win sometimes here.
Impossible looking. After all this action, think about it. There's thirty-six.
Beat queen jack of diamonds, you. Five six of diamonds. Alright, now I'm saying the diamond one specifically, cause they, uh, they would just bluff jam turn, you're right. Alright, of clubs then, how about?
But I mean, unless it bets on the river when you check.
Unless it bets when you check, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It, I, for those reasons, maybe it should.
He can have the ace two, so I don't know if solver's gonna wanna bluff jam, cause if he does have the ace, you just lose every time he calls.
I could see him just having a seven here sometimes displayed also.
Yeah. What's the size?
All in. It's all in or check in my mind.
Bet pot.
I work.
Do you ever go for like a cheap bluff? Do you ever do that?
No.
That's okay, that's an interesting question.
I'm gonna plug it in and, and see if I.
I don't have.
To, I just think we have like a lot of bottom of the range stuff that can get better stuff to fold, like I would love to target like jack high, queen high with some of my like. Six high, eight high.
Ooh, Lewis puts it in, I like it. Think on the ace, when you're three bets, c bet, this is the, the way to play this.
Wait, go to pre-flop again, please? Four.
Twelve.
Twelve. What? This is wild, okay.
I mean, this guy's, this guy's pretty, pretty out there.
I'm never doing this.
This is wild.
Final table again.
I'm not raising pocket fours here.
Hmm, me either. I like calling.
What, what are you doing pre-flop with the fours? Are you doing anything bigger?
No. You just wanna see a flop, you just call.
You might be able to raise them sometimes, but I don't know, man, like you're pretty deep. Seems good to.
Alright, the verdict is we should check river. We don't have king deuce, but we have king four off.
Okay.
And it's a give up?
It's a give up.
Where the, where the bluffs coming from? Are they coming from queen high?
Yeah, well, actually more jack high, jack four off, jack five off.
How did we end up there with jack four off and jack five off in a three, how did we three bet jack four and jack five?
They're three bet bluffs. You should, you should, you should like three bet a smattering across that whole range on the opposite side.
Yeah.
Like queen eight oh, ten seven oh, king four oh, big mix of those.
We should study heads up. Take a week.
Yes, it wouldn't be bad, you uh, that's the biggest pay jump in the tournament.
It'll be interesting, you, you know, it may not be the most valuable week we ever spend, but it'll be certainly fun.
And even just drilling ranges.
Just heads up ranges.
Six.
Oh, hold up. Are we sure we wanna do this without?
They have about forty different depths.
I know, it's, it's hard.
I like it here.
He goes third pot.
But I'm start, but I'm starting from a position of knowing nothing, so two weeks is gonna make me better, or much worse, one of the tip.
Yep, L P, my uh, my instinct was correct. Put uh, put that jack nine offhand in the math machine. Um, you were deep enough where like you have S P Rs up like twenty something. Um, you need hearts to be raising here.
Yeah, don't raise here.
Cause like there's just too many bad turns. Turns roll off like with straight and flush cards and then you end up.
Incredibly deep.
Position hung out to dry. Yep.
Yeah, you're gonna le- leave yourself exposed.
I'd be fine with this if we had like twenty-five blinds behind. I'd be much more okay with it. And like ditto, if we had ace nine or queen nine, then we're just, you know, we just have the nuts. But I think we're, it's like not super premium him at this point, and then we're building a really big pot out of position without quite enough juice.
Okay.
That I understand.
What was it?
Did you look at heads up sims or?
Yeah, I'm looking at heads up right now. Uh, I'll show it.
Yeah.
Uh, heads up, nine five deuce, sixty effective. In position, that's one third pot. Uh, we are raising like ace nine pure, king nine most of the time.
Yeah, because. This is the. Every time it's.
Yeah, queen nine a lot. And when it's this deep, like backdoors really matter. Um, you're gonna see heart turn cards, then you're gonna be like, oh shit. Why did I check raise? Now I have to play this out of position without a heart in my hand, like, oh, he could have flushes and.
Yeah, but does Jack eight need the heart?
This is jack nine.
Yeah, but what about Jack eight?
Yeah, but.
Uh, yeah, yeah, mainly you're gonna raise like through to a straight through to a flush, yeah. I'm sure we're like six four with the front door with the back door, high low that interacts with that bottom straight draw. With the front door, the back door, it's like pretty classic stuff.
What about ninety-eight offsuit, it's only hearts?
A little bit of hearts.
A little bit of spades and diamonds.
Sure, but like, I'm just on a little bit. Yep, ace four, uh, wheel draw, single heart. Yep, I think. I think this stuff really can help keep us in line if we pay attention to these motions, uh, especially deep, cause like. He's just gonna like snap call us down with like ace eight of hearts, ace eight of hearts has all the equity, and then we end up on river, you know, bluff catching for a tournament like. And obviously, it's not that I'm like worried that nine's not good enough, it's just like, do I wanna play for all the chips with it? Cause like, check raising on flop is setting us up for a situation where we do end up playing for all the chips. And like by the time we get to river, what hands do we think he's going to have? When all the money goes in.
Okay, so what happens here? Raise, I think we prefer to limp here, do we not?
I'm okay with it. It definitely gets.
I think you see some. But it's more the gapper stuff. I think these connectors actually do just prefer like a lot of limp calling. I don't know.
How predominant is our limping at sixty?
Very, like I think you limp mostly everything.
I'm seeing sixty percent raise, thirty-five percent limp.
That's what I'm saying. Four three suited does like.
Oh, I got it backwards.
I think the fact that it gets dominating hands to fold makes it a better raise.
Should we see bet here? Probably not, no hard, bottom pair.
No, take it to showdown, right?
Better.
It's okay.
Wanna see a turn, wanna hit the three or a four?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't be range betting if this stacked up.
If you see bet here, it's big, right? Too high card and a flush draw, so you gotta bet big, you gotta be polar. And then, you know, you're basing it on the flush, right?
Kind of, I looked up the strategy, um, it has more small betting than you would expect from like, from like. You know, six max strategies, um, I guess, cause ranges are just wide, and so we don't have like the same equity advantage. Uh, it has a lot of bet one and bet one point six.
Yeah. Yeah, you can bet this hand half the time, apparently. Only check three, thirty-one percent.
Okay, yeah, we should, we should study heads up. Yeah, yeah, we'll give it a.
It's rare you get heads up this deep.
Right. But yeah, I mean, even just knowing you're like, you know, knowing your pre-flop strategy, like cold at like twenty-five, thirty effective would be great, which I think. I don't, you know, I like have an idea about it, but I don't know it.
You could catch, maybe. It's probably zero E V.
Yeah, I agree.
Lewis is blasting.
I would wanna see what he's up to. There's like a billion missed backdoor stuff, right?
On that four three hand?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you could, you could call and try and.
What can he bet? He has, he's, he basically, it's like a jack or, like, I don't think he's betting a nine that size. Yeah, he wants to call, he wants to call four three, actually.
I wouldn't call here.
No, not here, before three hand.
Clubs, brick.
Unblocking clubs and blocking the straight makes this kind of an attractive bluff. I know it's, we have bottom pair, which should have some showdown value, but like you can just get them off of a lot if you raise here.
We can very easily run all of these, by the way, if you wanna plug any of them in, Louis.
Yep.
Instead of me trying to manually do it on the side.
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah, I would have liked calling four three on that hand, on the river.
Yeah? I think there's a massive E V in calling, you know, such a weak hand.
I think it's good, yeah.
I think heads up, even people who are a little, we think are nitty, they can find the spice sometimes. I definitely give people a little bit more credit heads up than in like six minutes.
We had good blockers, we had a pair. Everything missed.
Ten six oh is the type of hand here that we could bluff raise at a low frequency.
With the spade.
Pre-flop, no, pre-flop, sorry.
Oh, pre. Open or limp? Limp seems fine with this, I think.
Paul.
He makes it four, I don't know.
He made it four almost every time.
Yeah, okay. Alright, that's fine.
He, he doesn't go three.
We ain't limping to fold.
Alright, we, and then he's barreling this weird small sizing, I wanna call.
Milky, milky. Man, dude has like pocket tens or something.
Well, that's the thing, third pot.
It's, I think we were beat. I don't know if we could have done anything. Spicy.
I, I think we could fold turn. The king is good for him, it's not good for us.
Ten seven oh is another hand that we could three bet.
Then on the turn, he's sized so small that he wants us to continue, so it's like. It really feels like he doesn't want us to fold on a turn, so we can exploit.
Unless he had just king king, though, we had a good price.
We had a good price, but we can exploit, cause he really feels he doesn't want us to fold, no? We made it four and two. Double barrels.
I don't know, there, there's the other, there's the other read there, which is sometimes people are like, huh, I guess I need a bluff, but I don't wanna lose that much money, so I'll bet third pot. Like, I see that sometimes.
Well, if he like turned pocket tens face up, you would call, right?
Uh, wait, 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 can we talk? Uh, wait, wait, wait. Can we talk about calling ten seven O there? I, if I wanna continue with his hand, I wanna, I wanna raise it post flop. I don't think we have enough, enough equity to flat post flop. Post flop.
Post flop.
Yeah, I think it's polar, right? It's off suit date, you're okay calling, then then.
Post flop.
Call pre is good and then.
Yeah, although you are allowed to three bet it pre, but then on this, oh, so, okay, so I'm sorry, we went too fast. I didn't see this.
Check, check, stab.
So he checks.
Don't stop.
Problem is, at this point, at this point, we don't, our backdoor draw doesn't matter. Our straight draws don't matter. None of them are gonna get there.
It's just.
And if I do wanna stab this, I wanna stab it like five point five.
Sure.
Not a fan of this hand at all personally. I don't like any of it. Limb call, okay. Hmm, difficult spot. I think we fold and then we continue when we have one of the suits.
I don't know, man. I don't think we hold a lot of, uh, bear gutters heads up. Oh, what the fuck?
See, that's pretty big, you know, and we don't have a backdoor. And then both. So Lewis go for the raise, which is I think out of line.
I looked up that ace, queen, nine hand and it is mainly a like stab over bet.
I like this raise.
They, when they miss their C bet and you do it with gutters, you do it with like ten eight, which has a gutter with queen nine. You don't do it with ten, ten seven.
This raise is good. I mean, it might, it might be higher EV with clubs, but it should still do it with other suits, I think.
I agree. This is fine. And then he flips his hand face up and says, we, we're beaten. That's fine.
Yeah. I got you. Muck your cards.
I'd like to see a little bit more raising. Seems like he's mainly using a little strategy heads up, which is fine, but Sopper wants to raise more than it calls.
Okay, so this is.
Hey, whoa.
Can we replay from the start? Yeah, what happened?
Raise four, thirteen. Oh. Good board. Lewis checks.
Oh. Okay.
That's blasto.
Is that eight or eighteen?
Eighteen.
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 All right, I'm all in.
What the fuck? Why would you jam here? I would just call here. You wanna keep the bluff.
Why would you call? It's half your stack, dude.
If you raise, he folds on the.
It's not how, it doesn't matter. You're committed. Once you call, you're committed. He can't bluff you anyway.
Yeah, he can.
What are you calling that you fold turn?
It's not about what we're folding. It's about him continuing with more than just value after.
Oh, my God. All right. Yeah, if your opponent's brain dead and doesn't know you're committed and still wants to try to bluff you, then, then you pick up some more value.
I don't think for my opponent. I allow them to make mistakes.
So he jammed here and we're gonna call.
Keep the bluff.
I mean, why, why let a queen roll off on the turn? Just put it in on the flop.
I like the way Lewis played it.
No, this is ridiculous.
You wanna raise?
You're putting yourself, the SPR on the turn is less than half. You're never, ever folding any turn card in the deck. Why even see it? Just put it in now.
Your confidence is this, and this hand is ridiculous.
No, Louis, remember the, remember the hand that you had pocket sevens and I was telling you to jam and you were like, why would you jam? And I'm like, because SPR, you're committed. The, the math just says you have to jam. And then we looked it up and it was pure jamming. This spot is like that spot. This spot is like, it, this spot is just like that spot.
How often?
That's half your stack.
How often do you three bet and check?
Um, this board, maybe like, I don't know, maybe like forty percent checks?
You think?
Could be.
Don't you bet a lot when you three bet there?
Well, this connects really well with the call range, right?
Yeah, it smashes it.
Ten.
This feels polar. Checking and betting.
Let us look. Checking fifty-seven percent. Okay, so even more.
Okay.
I think this is much better, much better for his calling range than our, uh.
And then do we raise back? I don't think so.
I have to find, he's never supposed to bet this size, so I have to like change some things around. And also he opened huge and we three bet huge, so let me finagle this a little bit. To get the.
He basically just like need to take it with a lower, um.
What's the, uh, what's the goal with raising this bet?
Yeah, that is just, he thinks.
We're committed, Galen.
Raising is ridiculous.
You're, you got forty-four, forty-five behind and we're committed with second, second pair.
He bet eighteen, he bet eighteen. You have forty-four, he bet eighteen.
My point.
You can't fold. You can't fold. That's true.
Pure jam. All right, I'm, I'm trying to find it, Louis. One sec. Tim, if you wanna help me out, you can. It's weird. We started with sixty, raise two, raise twelve. All right, we have the raise twelve size, but the range is gonna be wrong.
Yeah, what's the SPR on the flop? Let's, um, let's look at the hand history.
Check. I mean, he's never gonna bet this sizing here, right? Like eighteen, okay, it is used, eighteen is used and our response is.
Almost two.
We don't have ace nine in range. Okay, but our responses to jam or fold, we only call with pocket sevens, nine, six off, eight, six off.
Nine, six, nine, six would be comparable equity.
Sure, it's been so first, then the checking now. Often will we check?
The range is wrong. All right, so first of all, we raised twelve pre, which, because it doesn't have him opening to four. So if we wanna get this right, all right, we should do a normal three bet range and we should lower the SPR. I've, I've been flipping back and forth of how to get this right. All right, normal three by range. Ten, nine, eight rainbow. Check. And we make him bet huge. Is this correct now? No, it's not enough of our stack still. So we have to click it down even further.
His bet was what fraction of the pot? Was it like sixty percent or something?
It was three quarters pot.
Okay.
Um. And it was what percent of our stack? Like forty percent of our stack?
So no matter how you put it, it's not sizing up on this flop, right?
Uh, no, small blind, I, I guess it's in big bets. Um, seems like we don't really jam over it, though.
Look at those options for bets sizes.
This. This is the, this is like what it should be. Oh, pure call. All right.
That's actually exactly where I just landed up. I just found my way to the exact.
That's funny.
And then look at ace, nine, a spade. Okay, yeah, just calling, mixing.
Diamonds are, diamonds are like, I don't know, bro, maybe I should fold.
Yeah, so I'm never raising the, your diamond.
Yeah, but.
You have twenty behind, he bets eight. Huh.
It's a nine, man. You wanna raise your tens there, no?
Seven, eight's kinda funny. Look at seven, eight. Seven, eight's like, ah, screw it.
Right, like, a lot of hands should just say, screw it. I have the equity. But not your nines, huh?
Like, whatever, show me pocket kings. It's fine. I'm live against.
Obviously, you trap.
The knight that wants to shove is the knight that blocks the straight. So it's queen nine and seven nine, which blocked, blocked the flop equity as opposed to relying on backdoor equity of the spade of the flush coming in.
Yep. And not only block equity, but they have their own equity as well. They can just like, they can outdraw aces on, on a nine or on a jack.
Danny, we're very, very confident with the ransom. You need to be more cautious.
Yeah.
It's an interesting thought.
I don't know.
It just feels like a lot, like, um.
It's no point in stuffing here in my mind.
We made, we made the adjustment as we took the stack sizes and we made them half so that the, that sizes worked. Was that what we did?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, that's mine. Okay.
Yeah.
Are we done?
It's still kind of a weird hand. Anyway, what was the conclusion? What did he have and what was the river?
Just call, which is good. Darn. He stuffed.
Call it off. Cause, uh.
Sick now, but your heads up, so you call.
We have to call it off.
By the way, ace ten, ace ten also calls the flop and then it donk jams on some turns.
Safe turn.
Don't do it. So, anyway.
It was actually on a queen turn. It was donk jamming. I don't get it.
And we get there versus a ten, we were way behind.
We, we get there in the most scammy way, too.
It is the most scammy way.
Yeah, the only thing scammy is the queen of diamonds. Queen of diamonds is pretty scammy, too.
I guess the range that's eight is just way too strong for us to put in, put it in with a nine.
Uh, is this not a spot to bet?
Uh, I would just bet small here a lot. I don't, uh, checking's not gonna accomplish anything. You're never, um.
Exactly. I would bet because we have the heart and we have the tree for interaction.
Are you saying on the flop, aren't we the defender?
Yes.
Why do you wanna come out betting?
Oh, I don't wanna come out betting, sorry. I would actually think about check raising a spot like this.
Right.
Okay, check, check. Okay, yeah, makes.
And you can't really bet the turn, so.
King's really good for his check back range, so.
Mm-hmm. Showdown loose. Showdown loose. Uh, yeah, I mean, okay.
The three, the backdoor, the six. Pretty good, no?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, acey boards are gonna be tougher to do that on, right? It's gonna have a lot of continues that we're gonna struggle against.
This is good. Oh, man, you might, okay. I like this. Honestly, I think this is good.
Backdoor spade, the ten.
The tennis spades is. Well, the tennis spades is just the nuts in this deck. Like, this is like one of the most valuable cards you can basically have.
Exactly.
Puts a nine and an eighth in the shitter, right?
But it's all the, like, the predominant flush combos are blocked by the board, so I might wanna size up even further. Uh. Cause we're gonna be like, hmm, more polar. We have fewer flushes.
I flop trip nines in a five-way pot, flop trip nines.
Does this make sense? I think I might like one point five two X pot river.
You want some eggs?
Oh, okay, this flop, bet big, we have the queen, hmm, tough spot. Do we call or we fold? Probably just a fold.
Hold to the big bet.
Gets that sizing.
Hmm, I think we're limping a little too much. Oh, limp jam's good, though.
I like slim jam.
At thirty, though, are you gonna see the pairs limp that much?
Oh, I don't like that bet.
Let me look. A little bit, little bit.
The ones in the middle, yeah.
I don't mind it. I would just make it, I'll slap instead of one here.
Are you playing, Galen?
Yes. I is.
Cause he just flopped trip nines in a five-way pot.
I did. I even sang a song about it.
And I liked your song. It reminds me of Sondheim. This is it. We win the tournament on this hand.
I like the call. No.
We don't win the tournament on this hand.
I think it's a good call.
Realistically, can we show it again? Three X.
We bet big on this board, I think it's good. Turn comes, he checks, we bet big again. I think it's good. River comes, he only fifteen, got two pair. You're like, okay, he has too many flashes, but sure, pay the math.
Pay the math half pot.
Has a flush.
Huh. I wonder if you could consider folding.
For half pot?
With two pair, it's up? No, I don't think so.
Exploit fold.
Beat us some portion of his value.
Do you?
Yeah.
What portion? What portion is that, Louis? What portion?
Top pair.
Please tell me precisely.
Top pair.
Yeah, top pair that he wakes up donk jamming river with, right, for sure.
Man, it would be tough. I'm not gonna sit here and say I know the right answer, but, um, I know what I would probably do.
What would that be?
Not fold.
Did you see the hand game?
Yeah, I did. The, the two pairs.
Yeah. It's like, at best, it's like, he like backed into two pair and thinks it's good or something and doesn't want you to check back. Which still beats you.
Lewis called with king eye here.
It's not a bluff, like what bluff, what bluff is he call call jamming? I mean, it's hard to fold two pairs. Sorry, I'm harping on this. These are the spots that I think we can find folds that like, we're not finding them.
Yeah, yeah.
It's never a bluff. It can't be.
Never, never fold.
This is a bluff.
This is a bluff. Lewis picks it up. He's like.
This is a strong call.
This is a strong call. I'm, uh, I would be hard pressed to find this one, I think.
Lewis is like, I'd stand to win the tournament.
See, if you're gonna call this, you should have, you should call the four three, that other hand, too. They're both.
Sniffed it out, sniffed it out.
Danny, you're trying to call bottom pair, fold second pair, uh, fold when you have two pair.
It's called hand reading.
Yeah.
Yeah. You fold when they can't have bluffs and you call when they only can have bluffs.
Make it nine.
When they, when they, when their range is saturated with bluffs, I should say. They obviously will still have value.
Just like a wet, dirty kitchen cloth, right? Bunch of stinky bluffs.
Sponge that hasn't been wrung out in too long.
Saturated with bacterial bluffs.
Cereal bluffs.
Bluffs, you guys are gross.
Bet. Or raise, that's okay, too.
Oh, yeah, this, yeah, it's good. Can make it bigger, though. Deep.
One, four.
Finding the big little.
All in, fold.
All right, let's hurry up and end it so I can ask you guys to buy me in the main. Said, Galen, Louis.
Help.
Check behind, check behind.
You got twelve minutes. Oh, cutting it close.
Yeah, I figured I'd list it, see what happens.
Anyone eyeing up that, uh, fifteen ticket, twenty-five dollar mega satellite?
Uh. Don't, don't tempt me, Peter.
Um. I wasn't, but.
I, I might skip the line if this thing overlays. I mean, fifteen tickets.
I find it unlikely to overlay.
Look, this isn't people gonna be just firing like six bullets here. Right, this is a twenty-five dollar thing.
The problem with this one is even if you didn't get your stuff to get through this stupid stage one.
Yeah, but I mean, a two hundred and ten dollar ticket for twenty-five bucks.
All right, this is the one where we win the tournament.
This is the one.
All right. Good game.
We did it.
All right.
Good game, Lewis. Well played. Nice little score. We have a lot to work on, Lewis.
Almost.
So what's the, what's the takeaway? Some misplaced aggression?
That would seem the obvious one. He's, he's, he's got his small blind and big blind. That would seem the obvious one. He's, he's, he's got his small blind and big blind backwards, it felt like in a couple spots.
Small blind, RF is a little bit weak, like he doesn't need to play off suit, do ten do soft, nine four off, these kind of bullshit.
He's expanding his over calling range in some spots, which is okay, but he should be focused more on like suited cards instead of like, I don't know, king nine or whatever was in there.
He's always on the gas pedal. Too much equity in position, need to focus on finding more.
Yeah, he needs to find the break pedal. That's exactly it. He needs to find the break pedal. He's got one speed and it's like, I don't know what to do, so I know I can bet.
Yeah, which is not great.
The ace three in particular was wild to me and then heads up also you were, or at some point, three-handed forced off of jack, seven of spades on the turn, bet folded a flush draw.
Yeah, and I'm surprised to see you miss three bets, free flop, no?
Yeah, he might just be balancing them. I wouldn't look too terribly much into that.
Yeah. All right, thanks a lot for watching, everybody.
Yeah.
I'll see you guys Monday.